I just sent you an email with the trust response.
Right, oh, we don't mind.
Fishing club going good this year?
Yeah, we're really good.
Good.
I gotta check your role for the last one. Have you been on the season?
I haven't checked for a while.
We have over twenty and plus inches there. They're just broke.
Yeah.
One of them went home, the other two, well, one, one mother actually dropped the last. She got a picture of it and they flipped off and then they walked.
I'm gonna give our planning commission members one more minute, otherwise we're gonna go ahead and start. We have two planning commission members.
You want some volunteers? I'm a war on you though.
Okay, um, no, not at this time, but thank you. So we'll give one, one more minute. Are we, are we getting live then? This is gonna be interesting because I'm going to be running a slideshow behind me while I can't see it. But that's okay. I hear a door. Hi, Brandon, we were waiting for you. No, you're up here at the table, this is a work session. Hopefully Lou's coming as well, there he is, like I had a precursor of Luke walking in the door. Oh, you're up here too, your work session.
I'll bet Lou's never left.
Yeah.
Sometimes you don't influence your time.
Lyle's confusing us by not sitting at the table with us, but he has a reason. Okay, do we have enough of us? We have at least a quorum of each. So without further ado, we'll start this work session. So this work session is about us as a team coming up with the strategies that Far West wants to do to, um, here, let me pull up the slide. Pardon me for going backwards here for a second. But in order for us to abide by HB four sixty-two, um, we have to implement twenty-four strategies. And we have to have an implementation plan and we have to have this done by October first in the general plan. So it has to be part of the general plan.
We don't have to implement twenty-four.
No, we have, of the twenty-four, we have to pick a minimum of three because of the type of city we are, which is a, classification that we are. So here's our, and so I'm gonna read through these real quick, if you don't mind, I'll read them from here because I do have a print off of that, so, um, and hopefully everybody's got some letters in mind for yourselves, but A, rezone for densities necessary to facilitate the production of moderate income housing. B, demonstrate investment in the rehabilitation or expansion of infrastructure that facilitates the construction of moderate income housing. C, demonstrate investment in the rehabilitation of existing uninhabitable housing stock into moderate income housing. D, identify and utilize county general fund subsidies or other sources of revenue to waive construction-related fees that are otherwise generally imposed by the county or municipality for the consideration or rehabilitation of moderate income housing. E, create or allow for and reduce regulations related to internal or detached accessory dwelling units in residential zones. Zone or rezone for higher density or moderate income residential development in commercial or mixed-use zones. And the red is for those that have train stations, for instance, commercial centers or employment centers. Amend land use regulations to allow for higher density or new moderate income residential development in commercial or mixed-use zones near major transit investment corridors, which is a train or some of us would say is I fifteen. Amend land use regulations to eliminate or reduce parking requirements for residential development where residents less likely to rely on their resident's own vehicle such as residential development near major transit investment corridors or senior living facilities. Amend land use regulations to allow for single-room occupancy developments. Implement zoning incentives from moderate income units in new developments. Preserve existing and new moderate income housing and subsidize use it by utilizing a landlord incentive program provided for deed restricted units through a grant program or utilizing a housing loss mitigation fund. So it'll scare me. Reduce or waive, reduce, waive or eliminate impact fees related to moderate income housing. M, demonstrate creation of or participation in community land trust program for moderate income housing. Implement a mortgage assistance program for employees of the municipality, an employer that provides contracted services for the municipality or to, or any public employer that operates within the municipality. I don't know if I wanna read the next one, it's very long, has to do with Department of Workforce Services and a bunch of partnering. Demonstrate utilization of moderate income housing set aside for a community reinvestment agency. Development agency or community development and renewal agency to create or subsidize moderate income housing. For us, because we're X, so X is demonstrate implementation of other programs or strategies to address the housing needs of residents of the municipality who earn less than eighty percent of median income. Some new strategies that they threw in for us is create a housing transit investment corridor. We don't, we probably don't need to do that because we do not have the transit. Eliminate impact fees for any accessory dwelling unit that is not internal. As defined in section whatever, create a program to transfer development rights to a modern or moderate income housing. Ratify a joint acquisition agreement with other local political subdivisions for the purpose of combining resources to acquire property for moderate income housing. Develop a moderate income housing project for residents who are disabled or fifty-five years or older. Develop, and well, that's the stationary plan we don't need to do. Create or allow for reduced regulations related to multifamily residential dwelling compatible in scale and form with detached, single-family residential dwellings and located within walkable communities within the residential or mixed, mixed-use zone. So that's our strategy, or all the strategies we get to pick from. So, um, if you guys are okay with it, this is how I kinda wanna conduct this, and I sent out an email on this. And because, well, Ted asked to be excused, but I was gonna say, because people are tired of hearing from me and those of us that have been around a while, some of us, um, I wanna turn it over to some of our newer folks to start off with. Back and forth between council and planning and let you guys share your thoughts. And I don't want you guys to take more than five minutes apiece, so if you don't mind, first one I'm gonna pick on is Brandon.
So what, some of this that I had questions are, is when we're waiving fees or rules, is there, what we're getting back from the state, is that like worth the fee waiver or the, because I remember we have to do this in order to get grant money, right?
Well, there are certain funds, like our road funds and stuff like that, that it can impact, so.
That was just one of my concerns as I was reading through it, is what's the, what's the trade-offs when we're waiving all these fees or waiving these rules for them? But, um, I like some of these newer ones, the ones that I like the best is, so my idea is the work with the neighboring community.
Hey, what letter is that?
T.
Okay.
Just because I was thinking we're already working with Pleasant View and that whole twenty-seven hundred location to see if there's any way that they would be interested in some, I know that they're interested in manufacturing, but also, some, um, some of this, um, another thing is you develop a moderate income housing project for residents who are disabled or fifty-five years or older. I know there's some nice communities in North Ogden that they created recently. In Plain City. And then, I was trying to wonder what are current ones that we're doing right now, do we already have some?
We have, yeah.
We're doing A.
A and E.
Because I liked A and I liked E and I, and I didn't know if those were ones that we already had adopted or are ones that.
Well, what we're able to do is, um, we can basically reaffirm ones we're doing and we can pick some new ones.
You said A, Lou?
Yeah, A.
That's what we currently have?
At the time we did this, you remember the planning commission developed a mixed-density residential ordinance? That got tabled?
Well, yeah.
But we don't have that as a strategy currently.
I'm saying, at the time, I'm saying that was a submitted strad- strategy when we submitted to last year, that was one of them.
Well, the three that we have that we've already recorded with the state don't include that. It had to do with changes we made to R one fifteen to allow more, uh, smaller than third-acre lots, that's one of them. The second one had to do with we reduced the number of acres needed for mixed use and that we were gonna preserve some of our, um, legacy communities, is that a way to put legacy communities that are already higher density and moderately income housing? For instance, Westwood Village. Those are the three that were submitted to the state that we currently are compliant with.
Is that, would that fall under the demonstrate investment in the rehabilitation, would that fall under B?
Other than that made us qualified two years ago. To be qualified this year, we have to either reaffirm those, and some of those have changed, or pick new ones.
See, I don't, you were talking about C.
Uh, I think Westwood Village would fall under B. Investment in the rehabilitation or expansion of infrastructure that, oh, maybe it is C.
Problem with C is it's currently existing uninhabitable housing.
That's, you don't think, that's.
Very habitable, so, yeah.
Have any diets in Far West that I think.
I mean, I went through, I think, maybe we should go through and just cross off ones we know we can't do. I know, see, I crossed off C because I didn't think we had that even.
Yeah, we don't, I don't think we have dilapidated houses that the city wants to restore.
I, I would agree, but bear with me, now that we've got Brandon's numbers, I wanna go to Janelle. Janelle, what do you have?
Okay, I looked at, um, E. Um, I know internal accessory dwellings was, I think, in the previous strategy, but.
Actually, it wasn't.
I mean, one of the options.
Yes, gotcha, gotcha.
But that was.
We're now mandated to, so.
Right, and so.
Technically, we have it, right? Technically, we do have it.
Right, we have internal, but this has detached.
Or detached, and I think we can, it was my impression that we could, I don't know, maybe not.
I don't know, I just change so many people without buildings, things with, you know, apartments and them like that.
Is, is that E or is it?
E.
Okay.
That was one of the ones I had just thought of, just because it's, it might serve our community well, um.
And we have to.
Yeah, and then I did, let's see, let me look at this one. I think G, I think that might go along with Lou, what you guys had done with that mixed-use zone that never, it's, it's not, I mean, it's just a work, you know, it's in progress.
Well, the, the mixed-use zone, the mixed.
We have a mixed-use zone.
Mixed residential.
This is amending land use regulations.
I was thinking we already have F, don't we? It's in the general plan, I know that.
Yes, mixed-use zone, we have, that exists.
And it's.
Purple squares.
Commercial and mixed-use zones near major transit.
Commercial centers or employment.
So I was thinking we already had F. Well, the, the, the area northwest of Hogi's Corner is in the general plan as a mixed-use.
I don't think it's, I don't think we currently have anything zoned as mixed-use, we would have.
We have, in the plan, which is what all we have to do is a plan.
In the plan, okay, we don't have to actually zone it.
We cannot zone somebody's property without them asking.
Okay.
We just have to allow, that's a strategy that we can allow.
Proposed. It, and this is the map of the future proposed, and so this is what we currently have in our current general plan. And so really what we're doing is we're going to be kinda tweaking this to what our future needs to be now, because this was twenty fifteen, it's been seven years, so. Okay, what else you got, Janelle?
R went along with the internal or external accessory dwellings, just eliminating the impact fees. I mean, that, they kinda go together to me, but, um.
That's not for eternal one.
No, it just says internal.
We don't allow that currently, but I think we should.
I think we should look at it, yeah.
And that's what G, was it G?
That's G, above E.
E. You referenced.
You can do external.
We don't allow external accessory dwellings.
Detached, we allow, we allow.
We have no choice.
But we don't allow.
Internal.
Internal, we do.
So like a basement apartment, this would be like a detached garage apartment.
Consider that one, for sure.
Okay, so R and.
Yeah, R, and then I also had looked at you, um, a fifty-five and older or disabled community. Those were kind of my, I mean, I, I, I have five or six written, but those.
Sure.
Were my three, for sure.
Yeah, so what I'm doing is I'm writing these down because we might automatically come up with, you know, some strategies we like and maybe we'll come up with some that get us past just three.
I, I don't mind the idea of A, I mean, we've talked about rezoning in some areas for that.
Okay, I'm gonna switch back to planning commission and Lou, since you're one of the seasoned veterans, I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Well, there's several possibilities. One thing I wanna mention right on the outset that's different this time around than last time. Last time we just gave them the list. In that training, they made it very clear that the outline has to include a timetable.
Yes.
Not just a wish list, but we, and that's, and it has to be measurable. So I read into that, there's accountability in this, if we say we're gonna do it, we say we're planning, and they said, you're excused if circumstances happen that you can't control, like an economic downturn or whatever. But if it's just that we were blowing smoke in their face, I think you're gonna get your hand slapped. So when we, when we outline these, we've got, they've got to be measurable and something we can attach a timetable to.
We have to have an implementation plan.
So it's, it's more than just, this is a good idea, so.
Yes, okay.
She's mentioned a couple of them, the, the whole idea of accessory dwelling units, whether you're giving them a break in the cost or you're reducing the restrictions or something, I think we ought to take a serious look at maybe one or either one of these or the ones that deal with accessory dwelling units. Personally, I have no problem with external accessory dwelling units. In fact, I quite frankly can't understand why we prohibit them.
Because we're a single-family home community right now.
Well, I just know there's, there's a, if you're trying to cater to low-income people, you wanna give them a small inexpensive house, you know, relatively speaking. So I think that's.
Is that E? Do you remember the letter?
E, E, I felt pretty high that we ought to consider that. Got F again checked with a pretty good thing. L is intriguing to me because they've got a lot of wiggle room there. Reduce, waive, or eliminate. Eliminate and waive sort of frightening, but what does reduce mean, ten percent, twenty percent? You know, if, if we can reduce it but not eliminate it, I think that's something we ought to consider.
My question on that one is, is, is there a definition of what moderate income housing is?
Yes.
That you have to follow, because I mean.
Eighty, eighty percent of the median income.
Median income of Far West.
Of the county, of the county.
I know what moderate income is, but I'm not sure what the affordability, what is it, thirty percent of that?
The county, if you're, if you're, if you live in an unincorporated area, but if you live in a municipality, it's the, it's the city.
Yeah, so it's.
That's what moderate income is.
Right.
What is it designated on the housing?
Right, that's always like, okay, what does, what is, let's, let's say that.
I did some, I did some calculations on that.
Because I was saying, so how do you like set that, like for a house?
The twenty-twenty census said ninety-one thousand dollars is the median income of the, of Far West.
Rounded up to a hundred.
So you take it down, um, eighty percent is about seventy-three thousand dollars.
What can you buy with that?
With, with seventy-three thousand dollars, if you have a twenty percent down payment, you can buy a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house. If you don't have a down payment, you can buy a two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar house.
Good luck.
Ten percent of our new construction has to fall within that, is what it's saying.
Yeah.
So.
I think that's a hard one to hit.
I do.
That's why the ADUs are such a big, we need to utilize those as much as we can, I think.
What else you got, Lou?
Well, the other one, uh, we have in the past kind of fluffed off the stationary plan. Because the current station within a half mile of Far West isn't operational. When it does become operational, we will be required to have a plan.
And that is incorporated in the front-runner Forward Project?
Yeah, which is, so it's, I think it's, we're looking at the future there.
Just that, yeah.
So I, I do think we ought to give some consideration for that, too.
Okay, and what letter is that?
That would be, um, you would say that.
Like B or something, wasn't it?
Develop and adopt a stationary area plan, V. V, like Victor.
V?
Yeah, that's B, right.
Okay.
That's some thoughts.
Okay, so, thank you, Lou, now I'm gonna switch back to council members, because I know, um, Josh is also seasoned. Been around a minute, been through some of this, so share with us your thoughts of the strategies you prefer.
I like the E and the F, we've already got those started. We can add upon them with the detached accessory units, like I said, we have the internal ones, we can add the detached. We've already got, you know, this mixed use with the commercial and that going, I think it's, I think using what we currently have and adding to is good.
You know what letter that is?
Those were the E and the.
E and F, okay, sorry.
I, so, you know, when we went through this exercise last year and I heard from half the citizens of the city about the uproar with mixed density and high density and everything else. The one thing, though, that did come back that seemed to be pretty favorable among the majority of the people I heard from was you, which is the fifty-five and older, those kind of communities, those seemed very, those seemed very favorable. And the difference, too, is, is they don't need to be a fifty-acre or a hundred-acre or two-hundred-acre development. I mean, you could put that in a small area and they work.
Five or less acres, most of the time.
So I, I honestly feel like after seeing Plain City, North Ogden, some of these others, I, I mean, I think that's, I would recommend developing some of those would be a good place to start.
My question with that one was, it says develop a moderate income housing project. What does develop mean? Does that mean?
Well, only, it's very hard for us to actually do development. What we can do is develop a plan for it and encourage, you know, because there are enough developers out there with interest in these kinds of things that they'll go for it. Because one of the, they, they need to be careful of their words, because we're not Salt Lake City where we can go develop something. All we can do as Little Far West is make a plan and, okay, and encourage these kinds of things, because they know, and we've talked to them about it, is that, so we can make plans, we can make zones and all that kind of stuff, but we are not developers.
And so simply it would, that, that plan would be like, just.
Well, I mean, we would probably have to show areas or, you know, we'd have to come up with a zone or something like that that would allow those kind of communities.
Yeah, so on this map, we could, we could show some areas where that.
Potential areas, not necessarily they have to be that.
No, right, right, yeah, our best guess that we're.
Like I said, and, and develop a zone that would allow that to come into play.
In, in addition to our mixed residential commercial zone already, because it does allow for patio homes.
In, in the mixed use, but this would be for something outside of commercial areas.
Just designate it for that specifically.
I think it's a standard.
That would show a more sincere intent, because the, the problem with the mixed one is we have all kinds of regulations. You've got to have so much commercial and so much residential, and they have to be done simultaneously. And I think that's a big deterrent to a lot of, if you, if we threw out some proposed areas where we were thinking about this, I don't think we'd have to wait very long before we'd have some developers at our doorstep.
Like I said, it's very specific, it's not trying to master plan a whole development, it's just, you know, here's.
It's allowing for that product for a need that most residents, even within Far West, we've done the surveys and stuff, they're, they're more okay with that, I kinda look at it as, when you're going to Smiths in North Ogden, you look at the stuff on the south side of the road where it's all townhomes, you know, it's kinda like, hey, if we have to. But you look on the north side where there's more of the fifty-five and older or the connected or the, you know, those kinds of things. Most people are like, yeah, they kinda look like homes, so.
And you would design it differently, too. You'd take into account mobility and the fact that they may not be driving, there'd be certain elements that would be specific to the design, which I think would, would, would bode well at the state because they could see, you know.
We don't have to have like the ordinance written for that, we just have to have a general plan updated in it in the works.
We, we need to have a plan before we have zones, I've always been a big fan of that, so. Because that way, you know what it is you're looking for. Okay, that it, Josh? Just three?
A quick question before we go forward, on these, um, accessory dwelling units, detached ones, is that like mobile, mobile homes or are they?
No, no.
Tappers?
No, no.
It's a physical building.
It's a physical building.
It doesn't have the restrictions of, of, of like a, a flag lot, you don't have to have that wide of a road and you can have a sidewalk going into it.
Or garage in the back with an apartment above it or something like that.
Okay, because I was like, I thought.
Yeah, no, these are structures, not tents.
Or a detached garage you decide to convert, I mean, literally.
Yeah, no, this is on purpose type of thing, because it has to be to code. There's nothing about a trailer that's code.
It's a she shed.
She shed. Hey, um, so bouncing, well, I don't have any more, uh, well, Steve's not here, so Darren, I know you kinda gave me your letters, but share your thoughts.
So before I talk, I'm, I'm one of these not-in-my-backyard kind of guys, but actually looking at it, I've got, I've got a twenty-two-year-old and a eighteen-year-old that will probably be looking for housing in the next few years and, and they're not gonna find anything, so now I'm kinda turning over and thinking, okay, maybe a little more moderate income type stuff for these younger folks would be good, so.
Did you wanna go over your, your?
Yeah, so my, so my letters, I was in agreement with some of them, so E, reduce regulations to internal or detached accessory dwelling units and then eliminate impact fees for accessory dwelling units and so forth, so that's E and R. A, rezone, I know we can't rezone, but we can, in our general plan, we can format where we would.
Plan for.
Yeah. And then G, um, amend, um, land use regulations to allow for higher denser, density or moderate income residential development in commercial or mixed-use zones, and so kind of things that we've already got going. And U, um, develop a moderate income housing project for residents who are fifty-five and older. And I, I don't think those patio homes are attractive to just fifty-five and older, I think younger folks would like a community, too.
That's kinda why I'm calling them cottage communities, kinda, you know, because it's like, um, this is just a, a thought I had, be like, okay, you have the fifty-five and older, which is great, but what about a similar type of thing that's kind of targeted for younger people and maybe has an integrated playground or something like that?
It's just, I've never heard anybody, I've never heard anybody say it's my American dream to live in a two- or three-bedroom townhome. They, they want a little house with a little property, even if it's just a little tiny bit of property.
Well, we, we used to call them starter homes, right?
That's kinda what we're getting at.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of those, so, is that it, Darren? Appreciate that.
Can I just make one comment?
You may.
Uh, yeah, you can't really regulate the age of the person that gets in a house, but the reality is you are talking about, you're concerned about younger, your young family kids. I'm, I'm the senior citizen around the table, there may be a time where I don't want my big house and I want a lot smaller house, but I want, I still wanna be in a house and not a townhouse apartment. So these, these two age groups kinda converge on the same housing. So it's not like it's one age group, and, you know, I don't think we necessarily want to even label it as such.
No, but if, if there were.
I guess.
But, but if, if there were to, because there's also, um, some premeds, like myself, let's say I was gonna downsize, I can't get much smaller than what I got, but maybe I don't want to live in a cottage community where there's a bunch of kids.
But, I, I, I understand that, but can you actually, can a developer actually regulate that?
If they create that community that way, yes.
You can restrict who buys.
Yes.
Hey, if you can do it, that's.
Well, and I think that's why the state's actually put that one in there, so I think that's.
Okay.
I mean, I think if we say we're opening it up, that it's no longer you, now it's just, we're throwing in higher density housing somewhere.
Yeah, almost all of those along the way, as you're going up to, uh, Smiths, are all fifty-five and older. I think almost all of them, and so is Westwood, and so those things are possible.
My worry is, can they control the price that they're selling those homes? Because what if they start creeping into these?
That really, well, we can't, but.
We're just trying to provide the opportunity, though.
They, they will be lower cost probably because, just because of what they are, they're not gonna have the land, and they're probably, they could be attached to others, for instance, that, I mean, that's some of the designs, that's how they reduce the cost of them, because, you know, for instance, if they have some of these that are really close together, they're basically getting, uh, three homes on what is currently, uh, buildable lot. So that means, you know, they're actually gonna get more for that plot of ground, because they have all the homes on it, but each one will be more affordable.
And in that presentation, they did specifically say that market trends and anything outside of our control, you can't be held accountable for that, and they'll kind of readjust based on what they see, what the, what the figures come out in the next few years.
Like I said, the reality of it is, is, I mean, we're an R-one-fifteen community, but if we build out an R-one-fifteen, it does open up other areas that are, people are trying to move up. I mean, it's one of these things, the reality of, I know lots of people that can't build right now, but are in homes that are perfect for moderate income housing, but yet they're making good incomes, because they can't get a home, so, I mean, it's not like everything needs to be moderate, but.
Right, well, it, it, it's a variety of products, basically.
And, and the reality, I think, is, the, the R-one-fifteen homes that I see constructed are not what I would call in my era, starter homes. They're, they're mansions, they're not starter homes.
So I know a lot of guys I work with that live in North Ogden or other areas that have the starter homes, that would love to move out, they just can't find homes right now. So, I mean, I know.
It works in both directions.
It works in both directions, so, you know, you gotta have the variety there to make it work, so.
Okay, I'm gonna pick on Lyle for a minute, because he wants to leave.
I gotta bail out for a minute, but, um, I talked to you earlier before this started, major transit internet or investment corridor, if we took out the investment word, that would cover I fifteen, why can't we use I fifteen? Because that train station right now is a pipe room, because they shut it down because of.
But, we're planning for the future, and that's still the future, we can still plan that way.
Because I, I chose E, F, and G, because I feel like that F and G almost go hand in hand to a point, because right now, that property northwest of Hoagie's Corner is mixed-use, including commercial, and like Lou mentioned earlier, that they have to be simultaneously, if we can adjust those regulations to allow one and then the other later, then that would qualify, you know, for the G part, and then F, you know, I mean, we're already doing, uh, E, the, with the internal dwellings. And then, like Lou mentioned earlier, we have, we had the, that ordinance ready to go, and it was tabled by the, it was tabled last year, and which I thought was a very good, a good plan, and it's just a matter of having that to, you know, to, to move forward with that, if that makes any sense.
Yes, it does. Thank you, Lyle, I appreciate you.
Don't mind me.
Relative to what he said, could somebody define for me what a major transit investment corridor?
That's what I was asking.
Exactly is?
What they said in the training, and several of the things Janelle and I went to, correct if I'm wrong, Janelle, but they are basically talking about, um, track stations, front-runner stations, um, BRT stations.
That's why I didn't put a mark by it, because I don't, we don't have anything even remotely relevant.
I think, so there's only like twenty-six communities that actually have.
Right, so, the stationary area plans, we're, we, we don't need to do, but, to what somebody else, uh, basically said, we are at least within, and maybe we can get, I'll, I'll call it extra credit, maybe we can get extra credit if we are able to define something within a certain, you know, as close as we can to a train station, for instance, like you were talking about.
We're gonna have to say something about it sooner or later, because we're within a half a mile.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that's something for us to consider, anyway.
So that's G, that's really the difference between F and G is the major transit investment corridor.
And if we can kind of tie some of that together, that, that, that might be all right. Okay, Katie, how about you?
Um, I just pulled up.
Thanks, Lyle.
I just pulled up the definition in the bill, and major transit investment corridor means public transit service that uses or occupies public transit rail rideaway, dedicated road rideaway, such as BRT, um, fixed route bus corridors, and public transit, um, so that's, I fifteen is not.
Right, so it's, it's front-runner, tracks, BRT.
Yeah.
And trolleys. They have one in Sugar House?
Um.
How about your strategy?
Uh, like, likewise, A kind of is, I know we already have it, but it's concerning to me with that, with what you had said about having to have ten percent of our, you know, of our land zoned, so it falls within that moderate income criteria, and I just worry about how much of that, because, you know, our real estate is so limited in the city, how much of our, our, you know, zones that would, our zoning and our potential commercial areas that would affect? Um, so, that, I mean, initially, that was what I was like, well, this seems kind of like we're already doing this, but, um, it seems like we would need to kind of recommit to that as well, from what I was listening to in the, in the webinar, and kind of up our game if that was our strategy. And, so, I, I think, also along the same lines as everyone else, um, E, the detached internal accessory dwelling. Um, I really like the idea of, um, changing the language and the regulations around, um, mixed use as well, so F. And then R as well, to eliminate impact fees for those accessory dwelling units.
Okay, awesome. You know what, we're actually gonna make it to you, Dave.
Okay.
So. I, I was wondering, you know, with only, that's why I was like.
To key in on what Katie had said about A, I think we've done a lot, but there's opportunity to further improve that and further adjust that. And G tags right in with that, because it just talks more about commercial or mixed use, but still allowing for more density.
G is the one we decided we couldn't do.
Yeah, you didn't mean G.
F and G are pretty much the same, F is just more of the commercial.
We did a two-for-one special.
Why can't we do G?
Well, G was, oh, F is the one that's around commercial centers and stuff, G was the one around the major transit investment corridors. Oh, this document they're.
The one I'm reading says F has the near-major transit investment corridors, and G just states in commercial or mixed-use zones.
Yeah, so I'm looking up there, mine's the same as that. G is the major transit investment.
Both say the major transit, just one highlight and one's not.
There, the G is the one I'm.
F is, F is required by those cities that have a transit corridor, and the G.
G speaks to me as just more around making sure that we put into our code that when we have, we can have mixed-use and commercial zones. That's kind of what I'm pushing for, so whether it's G or not, I don't know, but that's what I'm pushing for.
If we have to pick from twenty-four and two of them get us there, then we get, we got more than three.
So, A and G to me, um, are very similar, um, but one just kind of tags in more of the commercial mixed-use density. And then, I absolutely think we need to take advantage of the detached ADU, there's just, I, I think.
Which letter that is?
That's E, yeah, many have spoken about it, and then again, uh, I think U, which is the fifty-five plus. Yep, absolutely, so those are the four that I would key in on. But like I said, A's already, like, kind of, it's already there, it's needed to continue to work on it.
And, and, and in this, we can reestablish or reaffirm, and then expand on, and then have implementation plans for them, because, you know, like Lou was saying, before we had a wish list, now we gotta have more than a wish list. We can still have a wish list, but we have to do something about it.
Can I ask for some clarification? Because we've talked about A off and on, we say we have it. Is that based off of the changes to R-one-fifteen, is that why we're saying?
I'm gonna say, yeah.
And, yeah, it's kind of like we're kidding there.
It's the, the current changes we've already adopted.
Yeah, unless we want to expand on that, but that's.
I just wanted to make sure that was the understanding, and not the, the ordinance that we tabled, because I've heard back and forth, both things, bringing back the ordinance we tabled and the R-one-fifteen changes we already did.
They would both fit under that, but I think that that one is one of our currents, that we're.
These are the current R-one-fifteen changes.
Yes, we allowed a certain percentage, if they incorporate parts.
It is.
And that doesn't count.
But it's not in the general.
Unless we reaffirm it to be, that's how we want to go, or if we want to add two percent, or something, I don't know. Okay, we're gonna, we're, we're almost short, and Boyd got here just in time to miss the whole conversation, but this is gonna be perfect, because Boyd's gonna share with us his preferred strategies.
Um, I, I just listening to what you were talking about, but as I looked through that, I felt the same way that, that A, we pretty much already are implementing to a certain extent. E, I definitely want to look at for opportunities, some patio homes, some whatever, I, I think those detached units, I think we, we need to look at, at that one. And then, and then F was, what, uh, G, G was the one I was, so those were the ones that I felt were my.
So, and I know you missed this, there, we had, I mean, I guess it was a split, there was a lot of us that talked about the fifty-five and older communities, what's your stance on that?
That's you.
You, yeah.
I, I, I am okay with that, you know, depending on the areas, and we have that, we have that already with Westwood Village, and I think there's, there's some validity to that, I look at the cottages over toward neighbor, that, that is a thriving community, it's a positive community, um.
Would you like to add you as one of your? Would you like to add you as one of your choices?
Sure.
No, you don't have to.
I think that's an option, what, tell me what the general consensus was, I mean, there's.
Well.
I think we're all pretty much on the same thing.
We're not exactly, you know. You know, we're, we're gonna run out of, uh, work time here, because we gotta get into our regular meeting, but, um, yeah, I mean, we're definitely drifting towards, uh, I'm happy to say a fairly common, you know, I, I think there's, I think everybody, almost everybody has, uh, at least agreed on three similar ones, there might be some that have a couple more of these and a couple more of those, but I don't think we're done discussing this at all, and.
Well, and to tell you the truth, there's none in any of the ones that any of you guys all listed that I would be opposed to, that send my hackles up.
I also think we're required to submit three, there's wisdom in submitting four, so if we fall a little short on one of them, we've satisfied the requirement.
Yeah, well.
And they touch out. Money for, uh.
Yeah, if we have two.
We have a higher priority on things. You know, so it's like, if we only pick three, or just reaffirm three, then we've done the minimal, and they're like, yeah, whatever, you're on the bottom of the list for any.
That priority conversation that they had in the presentation seemed to be very ambiguous.
Yeah, I think, because they don't even know.
Intentionally.
Yeah, and so it's like.
But it's also. Right, so if we, if we put in for things, and we're low on the list, we, that would give them a reason to say no. Is, you know, the things that, uh, you know, Janelle and I got dragged through those for quite about two months.
Yeah, just a frustration.
One thing when we're drafting this, though, and, and under A, we've talked about A, says density is necessary to facilitate the production of modern income housing. What is the threshold for that?
I think what we do is define.
We're gonna have to do measurable things, and, and that, that's a, that's a very vague term, density is.
Yeah, maybe, because we, you know, that's one of those, maybe.
Yeah, that's what scares me, if we have half ten percent, you know, of our residential zoning, R-one-fifteen.
Of new construction approved, so, again, we don't have to meet it all through one of these, it's assessed met through all of them.
But I'm, I'm reading differently, I'm not reading what percentage of a development, I'm reading within that segment of the development, what density are you allowing?
Right.
And, and what is the criterion for, criteria for deciding?
I guess.
When the density trips the modern income housing?
I, I think that's for us to sell them.
Well, I mean, you're gonna have to talk about that.
Yes, in our strategy and our implementation plan.
No, I agree.
Yeah, well, for instance, if we were gonna say, we're gonna have these regular third-acre lots, and then we're gonna have, um, five acres of this is gonna be, um, you know, quarter-acre lots, or tenth-acre lots, that's at least a measurable thing. You know, maybe that's the cottage community that comes along with this whole thing, you know, maybe that, but it's up to us to finish defining it.
We don't mandate it, we just, we give the option, correct?
Yes, where, if we turn that into more of a, you will, um, do a certain percentage, and I don't think developers will argue, because.
Well, and, and the concern that we've talked about many, many times in the planning commission is a smaller lot doesn't necessarily mean a smaller home, it means a smaller yard. So at some place, we've got to figure it out, so we get to the size of lot.
Yeah.
That results in a smaller home.
Less grass, more water rice.
Yeah, well, and, so.
That's what kind of scares me about trying to implement A right now, is I think it's a lot harder of a one, I mean, the internal, you know, dwelling units, external dwelling units, fifty-five and older, I think those are a lot easier of a path, and honestly, I feel like they fit our community really well, because we do have a lot of larger lots that work really well for detached and internal units. We have land, which works really great for fifty-five and older, so, I mean, that's why I think the reality practical approach to me, that's why I like those, is the other issue, too, that I, I get concerned about with the higher density, it was brought up a lot last year, is, is we're seeing right now with twenty-five-seventy-five, we start throwing a bunch of density, and we're having major funding issues trying to do infrastructure for roads and other projects, so I hate just going down that path without spending a little more time and developing it adequately. So I just wanted to share that with my, concerned with A, is it does seem vague, and it seems like it's a harder goal to achieve right now.
So the only thing I said, uh, what, um, about everything that was thrown out, L was the only one I didn't agree with, um, because while Lou pointed out that reduce is the only one that we might be willing to, uh, consider, I don't think we need to consider any of those, because the developer isn't going to be looking for it, so why offer it?
I mean, as an incentive, yeah, I, I, I agree with you on that.
I think R's good, eliminate impact fees for.
ADUs.
ADUs, mainly because you're building them on an existing lot that's already paid the impact fees, it's already there. I think that's easier to say, we're not gonna charge impact fees, so you almost get, by allowing for the external units and doing R, you're getting.
That's one you can add for no cost, so.
We're doing the mixed use, and if we do the fifty-five and older, we got four options right out there.
So I still think there needs to be a plan for young folks in there as well.
And I, I think that's just something we could start doing and looking at, I just think for right now, trying to get something done in the next few months, that's.
We have to have, luckily, by October first, it's not like we have to have things halfway built. By October first, we have to have a plan, and that's, that, you know, and that's, and then the next year, I'm sure they, they're gonna plug something else in. And so, give me one minute, because I'm gonna share, uh, my, my quick thoughts, if you don't mind, I'm leaving myself for last, just because we ran out of time, you wouldn't have to listen to me, but now you do, so, um. Okay, so on, on A, I wondered if we need to create a, a new zone of, of sorts. Uh, B, I, I don't have that as one of my checklists, but I wanted to at least, um, ask about it. On B, demonstrate investment of infrastructure, um, I wondered if we were doing expansion of sewer, if that is something that can be demonstrated, we're doing for infrastructure that would, you, you, you know what I mean?
Well, I don't know how to demonstrate for moderate income housing.
Well, if you're gonna bring in more homes, you're gonna need more sewer.
Yeah, but the reality is, is we only, we make the developer do that.
I, I, just, that, that was my question, so, and one of them that I did have highlighted. I, I, just, that, that was my question. So and one of them that I did have highlighted was E for creating or allowing uh for the internal or detached dwelling, mostly on the internal. Um because we have to do the internal, at least for now, they'll probably come up with, you have to do the detached too. Um F, zone or rezone for higher density in mixed use zones, commercial centers or employment centers. That fits into, you know, our current uh plan. Uh G is kind of like that. I was kind of, you know, between the two. Once again, highlighting commercial and mixed use because that's the easiest way to implement some of those things. Um there was some amend, land use relay uh regulations on H to eliminate or reduce parking requirements for something like senior living facilities. Let's, you know, if there's.
Kind of walking community though, so.
No, well. Let me, let me rattle these off. We were, so but I, I at least wondered about it because some senior, you know, if you have a senior community, they don't need as much parking as like an apartment complex. Because they don't have cars. Agree to disagree. Okay. Okay, um. And then I think that was the end of, no, the last one I picked was U. Uh develop moderate income housing project for residents who are disabled or fifty-five or older. I, I, I I'm okay with the Hope Cottage Community type of thing.
Your thoughts on R then? Just R, eliminating the impact fees, similar.
Impact fees is, it's one of those things um I'm sure, maybe.
Well, this was just for the.
External accessory dwelling units, then it goes hand in hand with the other ones.
Sure, and maybe we get a two for one special on that.
I'm seeing, that's why I'm seeing that we get.
Uh, yeah, two for one specials are never a bad thing on these things if we can get. Some they make us, so what we have to do internal, and if we don't have fees for them, then we've got two or three, alright.
Yeah, but I, I guess the question, we do need to I would like to have that discussion with public works before we just jump on that bandwagon.
Well, because, yeah, impact fees matter.
I'm assuming that you wouldn't have an accessory dwelling unit on every house down a current line, so adding you know, half a dozen in an area is gonna impact, because if it does, we suddenly have to start changing things, you know, that is a bigger.
Well, and if somebody's creating an internal accessory dwelling unit, they're not really um upping the impact of the original home being built, so there really isn't an impact on that. So if we just say there are no impact.
I'm assuming it works. I'm just saying, we, we should have that discussion.
It's amazing. Have the discussion and all that kind of stuff. Okay, so we got a seven o'clock meeting coming up. Um you guys want to take a quick break for five minutes and we can get up on the, the dais? I do have this map here. Um just for fun, I'm gonna ask this question before we just go ahead and adjourn. Do we want to continue this discussion after the regular meeting at all? We can, we can suspend the work session and then come back to this after and to have some more discussion about the map in general and, and expand on this. And it's one of those things, it's still an open public meeting. We can, you know, continue on, but it's, you know, less time and strength, but we also don't have to stick around for it. And we can set a time of when we're done for sure. Do you want to continue or just be done?
Could I suggest an alternative?
Sure.
Just still this list down to the ones we're serious about.
Okay.
And then have our second meeting with, just looking at that.
So I, I think at this point, the items that we've really focused on, I don't think have a huge impact on this. Yeah, I mean, yeah, if we decide with the fifty-five and older, but I think that's not a discussion that we need to have right now, for sure.
Okay, okay, so adjourning the work session will be back at seven o'clock. Gives us time to rearrange the furniture. And get the microphone.
Yeah, it is. You guys squeezing us in?
Switch it to the agenda?
Someone else. So that's where it's kind of really tricky area. So that's what we're trying to figure out. So he didn't really answer the question.
Do you want to discuss it? Because I, I know.
Think we did. I signed something. I signed a lot of things. I, I feel like, um, you know, on MASH, Colonel? I think we sent it back, but let's clarify with Lindsay. Okay, I'm pretty sure ninety-nine percent sure. Boyd might know for sure.
That's what I thought too, so. Swably.
We can talk about it.
Yeah, I remembered to bring your shirts.
I thought we used, you copied me. That's what I, I'm ninety percent sure.
Why am the other ten percent?
Thanks for allowing me to be late.
We've got more mics than we need.
Oh, I, I didn't know we had one, so.
That's okay. We want to make sure everybody hears us. Do you know, you mind doing the pledge? Offering a pledge? I made you do it last time, didn't I?
Last two times, maybe three.
No.
You did a pledge and prayer.
Well, I pick on you a lot.
I'm not complaining.
Josh, will you offer a prayer?
Sure.
Everybody says I'm fair.
Seven o'clock. Welcome, everyone. Here we start our uh May nineteenth city council meeting. Uh we had a work session a little while ago. We were talking about um things we need to do to abide by legislative uh mandates, so having to do with um strategies for moderate income housing. So we're gonna be talking some more about that with general plan and all that over several uh weeks, hopefully not too long. We have to be done by October first, so at least we have a goal. So welcome. So here we are. Uh we're gonna start with a pledge of allegiance and Janelle's gonna lead us and we'll have a prayer offered by Josh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we are grateful for the opportunity to gather this evening, to be able to live in such a wonderful community, to come together as citizens, as friends, and to be able to join together and working towards the, the goals that we have and keeping this community great. We are grateful for the blessings that was bestowed upon us, and at this time, as we work tonight, we pray that we may be guided and directed. We pray for those in our community and throughout the world who are suffering and afflicted in different ways, wars, sickness, are mindful of them and and ask for peace to be upon them and health and strength. We are grateful for all that was given us and we give thee thanks in this we say in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Thank you, Janelle. Thank you, Josh. Okay, in our comments and reports section, we're gonna start off with uh public comments. Anyone have some public comments they'd love to share with us? It's like nobody wants to speak to us, so we'll move on. So we have a presentation from You Are Gold Suicide Prevention Concert Presentation. Looks like we have some folks that want to come up and share that with us.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Uh, my name is Mark Tucker. I'm here representing the Live Life Bigger Foundation, which is a foundation started by a young man in Bountiful to help with teen suicide or just suicide prevention. It's become a, as we all know, a, a pretty big problem, for lack of better words, uh lately. In fact, just this last week, I'm sure you probably know a junior high student here in Weaver County took their life. As part of that uh the foundation, and this is a foundation run by teens and just have a few of us adults that are trying to help get the word out and, and help with this, but they're putting on a You Are Gold concert and suicide prevention event. This is, will be held June eleventh at the DE Event Center. Uh the concert will be, the headliner for the concert is a band called National Parks. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with them, but uh I've listened to a few of their songs and they're quite enjoyable. I think the, the kids tend to like them, but they're they're not the rowdy, crazy music like some kids, you know? I never thought I'd say that. That's what my parents said to me, right? But uh the uh, besides it just being a concert, they, we will have a lot of uh different venues, a lot of different therapists, different people there to help both the kids and parents figure out signs and, and things that they may be looking for. You know, within themselves and, and for parents with their kids or, or friends or anybody else. They, so there will be people there to, to help. So this is more of an educational event more than just a concert. There will be a lot of fun for, for all ages. It is a family friendly event. Uh but we want people to walk away from educated. Uh even going, there's four different stations that will have four different uh my mind's gone blank, but four different areas to focus on. And once everybody goes and gets a card stamp from all four of those, they'll likely be put into a raffle that be raffling off some prizes. So there's some incentive for the kids and, and parents both to, to get educated about that. So why am I here? One thing that we've really noticed is that in the, the, a lot of the kids with the, have the suicidal tendencies are ones that come from lesser privileged families. We want to get as many people, especially those that are in need to this event. So what we're doing is we're presenting to the cities as much as we can and asking them to help by purchasing some tickets to give to either some of your youth council that are involved with these kids or some that just can't afford to, that need to some help. We're working with the uh, the Hope Squad with the schools. Uh Weaver School District is a big sponsor in helping us a lot that way, but we're just kind of figuring, you know more about that or working with, you know, your, maybe your youth council that can help us get those kids that really need to be there to the concert. We're not asking for any set amount, but just uh, and the tickets are not expensive, they're fifteen dollars apiece. But we're just wondering if the city, the council could approve some purchase of some tickets to help those youth that need to be to this event to get there and their families.
Hey, um thank you for that presentation. I think it's very important. That's, and I think we had a discussion about that a little bit.
Yeah.
Um I didn't put it on the agenda to actually be able for us to make a decision.
That's fine.
What we will do is we'll follow up because um Katie right here, she's actually involved with the U City Council and the CTC. So um we'll definitely put it on an agenda for, and actually take action on it, but I
Okay.
Think it's, but we can help with for sure, and we, we don't have to vote on that is helping spread the word because through our social and all of those kinds of things, if that's helpful as well.
Yes, it is. So do you have some places around town that could put some posters?
Absolutely. We'll take as many posters, not as many as you. We will take as, as many as you have there, want to share with us, and we will put them around in our bulletin boards and, yeah, that's.
Sort of bulletin board, or I know it's a rec center here where some of the.
Rec center, we got one here, we got our parks.
Yeah, anything that's, anything that you can do to, to help spread the word would be fantastic.
Have you worked with the Communities That Care Coalition?
Yes, have I personally? No.
For this effort?
Yes, there have been some uh, some of the other members on this committee that have been working with them, yes.
Because it seems like the mission of the two kind of events and their, their association line up really well and.
Have you heard about it through this?
I haven't heard about it through.
Well, maybe we haven't been doing a very good job. This, we kind of got pushed back a little bit on, on when we could announce some of this stuff because of the working with the National Parks, they have some requirements, but uh but yeah, we, we are working with the Communities That Care and the, and the Hope Squads and the schools and stuff that way to get, to get things going.
Does that reference like, is there like a website or something that we could even share like on our, like you said, on our social media or with material?
And if you're on Instagram, it's, it's Live Life Bigger is the name of the foundation. Uh the young man that's a, the C, the, the founder of it, his name is Smith Alley. Uh great young man. So he's just graduating this year, but uh started this foundation that, and it is a nonprofit. We're not looking to make any money on this. Just want to get as many people out there to be aware of it as we can. I think most all of us have someone close to us that, that's, or, you know, or know someone close that's been affected by it.
Yeah, ju- just a, a quick question. May- maybe you don't know the answer to this, but does it seem like um social media, social media and isolation have been a contributor to some of these issues?
Yes.
You didn't hesitate even for a second on that, did you?
No, because it's uh, uh in fact, part of the people that are helping with this, and I think some of the, if I remember right, one of the events is talking a lot about screen time. That's a, a huge issue, and that's uh, you know, getting people away from society basically and, and friends and talking and you know, and that's where a lot of the depression and stuff comes. And then obviously, there's so much garbage on social media that can drag you down even further.
And then we're gonna utilize it to help get the word out and the kind of irony in that. Well, you know, you, you put it where they are.
Yeah, but uh, you know, it can be very good, but it can also be very damaging.
Exactly, it's like a lot of things, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, thank, thank you. Anybody got any more questions? I appreciate you coming and presenting this. I know you guys presented it wake hog and I thought, but. But I want to hear it some more.
Thank you. So like you say, we'll, we'll follow up or you've got my number too, so, okay?
Alright. I have a question. Would it be something that we could purchase tickets with through the new city council budget and then give them the way, away on Facebook or something like that?
We can do whatever we choose to do.
Yeah, you can, you can do whatever you want with, once you have the tickets.
We'll, we'll discuss that.
Yeah.
Uh later.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, um Ted is excused because he wasn't feeling well. Lou, are you going to be representing the planning commission?
I totally am.
Okay, we're gonna get a report from planning commission from Lindsay.
Yes, uh they tabled um to resolve requests and request to the general plan for further discussion. And then they set a public hearing to consider waterway landscaping.
That was pretty much it. Okay. Thank you. I, we always appreciate those kinds of reports, don't we? So moving on to business items, so um we're going to uh consider setting a public hearing for June second. Consider the request to vacate a public utility easement for Wayne and Kelly Seright. Seright. Seright at twenty-four ninety-six west, twenty-eight fifty north. Come on up and explain a little bit. I mean, it, we're not going to take, but it, it helps to set the public hearing if we know what it is you're up to.
I just want to build a shed that's fourteen feet by twenty feet. So going east to west, it'd be twenty feet long, ten feet off the west side of the property. And I was hoping I could go like four feet off the back of the property because they got that thirteen foot or ten foot easement off that.
Thus the request to vacate easement so you can, right?
Yeah. And so that's really all I'm here for.
And we're just going to set the public hearing per process, so.
Okay.
Any questions or?
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for June 2nd, twenty twenty-two.
Josh and Katie did the motion and the second. Um, let's, this will be a unanimous thing. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any? It was unanimous, so we've set the public hearing.
All right, so then, should I be there, Gene Sec? Is it here?
So the public hearing is when people will want to, uh, interact like your neighbors and all the folks that have been notified. And so if there are questions, they would want to ask you.
Okay, and we've got all the paperwork signed. If you've looked at it, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have.
Hopefully I've got all the.
Yeah, th- there was one, one question I did have, and it gives you a couple of weeks to get it ready. Um, did you reach out to the fiber companies?
Yep, like Con- Connect.
Connect and Optic Loop, when Optic Loop, if they're in your.
They're not.
They're not, okay. But Connect is? And Connect's one of the letters?
Yeah, I've got the letters.
Perfect.
If you need them, I've got them here.
No, I, as long as they're part of the package.
Yeah.
It's one of those things, they're fairly new in those that need to be notified and.
Century Link is the hardest one.
Well, that's because who uses them anymore?
Yeah. All right.
All right.
June 2nd then.
June 2nd.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, um, B, so a discussion action on the Children's Justice Center funding request. So remember when they came, um, it's been a couple of months ago for the CJC? I wanted us to have the discussion, decide whether we want to, uh, go ahead. They were requesting somewhere around, um, twenty-two thousand some odd, and they wanted to use some of our ARPA funds. And, um, just some, uh, more information on that. I think, uh, not that that plays into our decision directly, but maybe it does a little bit. So I know for sure that Harrisville City and Roy City have both decided not to and both to contribute towards it. Plain City decided to go on the easy payment plan. They're going to do the multiple year thing. At least that's how they had voted so far, and that's as much as I know so far.
Do we know if, if the other cities aren't doing it, what's going to happen?
I.
Is it just going into a fund for years down the road or is it?
I think it still goes to where this was for, to help with the construction. Um, they did clarify, one of the questions that even WACOG had was who's going to own this building? And they have clarified that, that Weaver County will own this building. It's going on to, at least if everything goes forward, on to the, uh, Zodogden School District property, I think it is, and they get some kind of a really good lease. And so I just wanted us to have an opportunity to discuss and decide what action we want to take.
I'd like to hear from them if this is going to move forward. Price of building has skyrocketed. If people are, if, if cities are bowing out, I would like to know what their intent is.
Okay.
Before we.
Or which cities, like, you know, Ogden is a six hundred thousand dollar contributor. Are they?
Are they in?
Mm-hmm. Because ours is pretty small compared to some of the others.
Yes.
But what, what do they do when they're missing six to eight, a hundred thousand to a million?
If, if Ogden and Roy aren't in, then, you know, what, we're not that much very helpful.
I don't know that I've heard the vote on this team that if we don't have enough, if we don't know where it's, where their city, so.
Well, and I feel like, mm, looking at the budget, most of our ARPA funds are already earmarked for the Public Works Facility. Which, I mean, this is a great cause, but I think that we have a definite need to use those funds for that facility.
Yeah, I, I don't think anybody questions that, uh, the CJC is not a good program.
I agree. And I, and I want to do that, but I just don't want to give them funds and then it's, it's for ten years, you know, so.
Yeah, that, I, I would be concerned about saying, yes, you can have this, but then we don't see any sort of.
Right.
Actual construction for how long? And because it is, we are using it.
Yes.
You know?
Okay, so.
I'll make a motion this time. We table until further information is available.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Josh and a second by, what's his name? It'll be a boy. I forgot to write everybody's names down, so the trick.
There's a lot of pressure on him over there.
It's one of those days, come on.
You've only sat next to him for how many years?
I know. That's exactly the problem. I, there, there's this lady at home I have a hard time with too. Discussion action, form base code. Here's another one of those discussions. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, sorry. C, you frustrated me there. Form base code. So we had a discussion a while back. There was at least the comment that, um, so the planning commission did bring it to the city council with their recommendation that we not go forward with form base code. There was a comment saying that we voted to not go forward with form base code. And if that ever happened, I was not in, in a meeting, and I'm going to say I was probably always in a meeting. Um, so we never actually took any action on form base code. So we're here for a discussion action on form base code. Do we want to elaborate on what form base code is before we, um?
Well, the way I re- the way I remember that coming to pass was we got the recommendation from the planning commission not to proceed with it. It died. My understanding is the action was going to be is we were going to have a work session or further dialect on that to make sure we all understood, one, the reasonings behind the planning commission's recommendations and get additional information because there was a lot of confusion on what the form base code was, what it meant. And I even think right now, I mean, I don't know why the planning commission tabled last week. I wasn't aware of that, but I mean, that makes a big play into that area too, because that's part of that area that that was going to be applied to. So, I mean, I'm not necessarily saying I'm for the form base code, but that's just kind of the background of why I think it didn't come for a vote.
Could, could I comment for the reason for the table?
I, Lou, it, just because we have a recording going on.
Remember the planning commission? We had two public hearings and close to zero representation from the public. We had half of the planning commission absent with very little discussion involving the whole planning commission. And I felt that, that they were weighty enough issues, particularly when you're considering changing the general plan, which we usually spend weeks deliberating over, which would then be required before you rezoned it. So it seemed premature to make any action. So that's the reason for, for tabling. It's not that we, we will revisit it. We just simply didn't have enough.
I just know with that area, with what's being proposed in that area, that.
And, and tha- that's another thing. We, we've gone to many, many joint meetings and there's been a lot of discussion. And suddenly a very shift, abrupt shift in plan to rezone it M1, you know, seemed like a radical change without discussion. And just to comment about the, the form base, uh, there was mixed feelings in the planning commission about that. Uh, I think the bigger concern was the version that we were looking at from Pleasant View had it written to excruciating detail. And I think there was, uh, some consensus that just at some level, form base might have some potential. But when you start dictating the color of windows and, and, and everything else, that seemed a little excessive. So, um, the, the, the gist of it was we did not accept the current version of form based as presented to us.
And that's why I think it was, we were going to have a work session or further discussion, and that's why it wasn't a vote.
Question for you, Lou, before you sit down. Uh, with the work that the planning commission has done on the general plan today to do that update, if this, if form base code was something we decided to move forward with, how would that, how disruptive would that be to the general plan update that you guys have worked so hard on?
Much of the general plan update to date has been editorial. We've gone through the sections and tried to consolidate a lot of things we felt were unnecessary. We still haven't finalized things like proposed land use and the, the verbiage we're going to have on future circulation patterns for traffic. So there's work yet to be done that I think is probably the most important part of the, of the, the general plan in terms of future design and plan for the city.
Just a note of clarification, the form base code wasn't a citywide adopted form base code. It was only meant for a very small, specific area.
Very specific.
With Pleasant View over there.
And that was.
Problem that I had to struggle with is we were just doing it in one little area.
It, it was a peculiar ordinance because it was, it was driven by what Pleasant View wanted to do. It was very specific to that location and only that location. And that probably tainted some people's feeling about form base code rather than looking at it as a, as a concept. It, it got clouded by all of the complications dealing with, uh, Pleasant View and, and all of that sort of thing. You, you are aware of that.
Yeah, so what also hurt it was Pleasant View added in three other areas that they hadn't even spoken to us about. So, um, I, you know, I, I think form base code can be very useful when applied correctly. And, um, all of planning, or, um, Lou's comments regarding, uh, the history of the way it went. It's just, I think we just need to pull it back, rework it, and it still can have a very applicable use in that, in those areas. Not just that one, but multiple areas within our city.
Do you have some more there, Boyd?
Oh, I just think if we can use it for other portions of the city, you know, that I, that I, makes more sense to me.
So I, I'd like to share a thought. So many years ago, we, and we used to have this, um, thing called a planned development ordinance. We have a couple of communities that were built based on that, you know, Ramuda and Mountain View. We, I personally think overreacted when we just ripped it out of our code and said, we don't want the PD overlay anymore, instead of having a planned development ordinance that is enforceable. And we're with some of these things with some of the, I, whether it's form base or planned development, to me, they're, the, um, the target is kind of the same thing. You know what you're going to be building in your, you know, and the developers are going to follow a plan, whether it's a development agreement or this plan or the form or whatever word you want to use, but it's like that way we all know and they all know what we're doing and what's expected. And I, I think that there were some opportunities in many of our areas to maybe, um, revisit that and maybe make that, you know, consider doing that. We don't have to call it form based. We can call it planned. We can, you know, do whatever we like to, and that's just a, a thought from my head, but it's, you know, something we.
So maybe instead of, what, so what you're saying is instead of form based code, we would have a planned development agreement, uh, ordinance or something like that?
That's a way to approach it, and we talked about this a little bit, even when we were doing, uh, the plaza out there at, uh, Smith Family Park. It's kind of like, well, we're kind of, you know, doing some things that were kind of like, this is an overall plan of creating a community next to a park, and how is this whole thing going to work out? And we kind of did it in sections like, here's the residential, here's the park, and here's the commercial. Instead of going, this is how it all goes together, you know? And we had those discussions about that, and there might be some other opportunities like that.
Yeah, it seems like we kind of threw the baby out with the bathwater on that one. And I like, uh, I like the approach of creating a holistic community and having that continuity between those, you know, the transportation and, and green space. And, and I think, yeah, maybe with the, with what was presented to us, uh, from Pleasant View that kind of ended that discussion, but I think it, it deserves some, a reevaluation because, um, yeah, I think we need to have some way that we can have some teeth to, in these codes and in these areas to require them to, you know, have that more community feel within, instead of, you know, here, this is, this is residential, this is park.
And, and, and one, one example of this is, so I'm going to say Ramuda because I, I live there, and it's actually a pretty good example. Part of what the planned development did for us was it allowed for smaller lots as, as long as there was also, um, the amenity of open space, you know? Because my whole street, we're almost all quarter acre lots. That's all mine is. That's how big it is. And that's okay. I'm on one of the smaller lots, but I have this virtually huge backyard that somebody else mows and waters, which is important these days. So anyway, it, it, it's a thought. I think it, it might be something for us to, and it might even help us with some of this moderate income housing thing. Maybe we have something like that that allows for, gee, maybe you can squish some of these things together, have some more moderate income housing, but you're also going to get some amenities, maybe some green space and, and parks out of it, which, you know, we're going to need. If we don't do something like that, I think, um, Josh understands this. Um, if we don't have a big plan like that, you wind up with, and I don't want to say it wrong, but the, the whole area from Mia Meadows South is all houses, right? Is, except for the school, there's really no open space, and I know some folks in there have that concern.
One question I do have is, watching Pleasant View right now, I mean, they've got the big road going in there behind Trigon. I mean, they've put in the few things on twenty-seven hundred north, but then the mobile home park is coming back behind it. It doesn't feel like they're really adopting their form based code plan for what they're doing over there.
I think that right now as well.
Well, really, the, the private property of the, the mobile home park, that never changed, right? The use never changed. So Pleasant View really didn't have an opportunity to change anything there. What did happen is the, the ground was sold up in the front, and that did change the commercial use. So, um, I, I would say that I, while I don't disagree with you, I think it's too early to tell and.
I mean, I think it's showing, it, it is hard to, I mean, you almost have to have a single developer develop a whole bunch to make it flow if you don't have that master plan, what we talked about, but, but it seems like they're having a hard time implementing that as well.
Yeah, and they've had some turnover. So I, I think between that and the fact that nothing has really been pushing them, um, they do have a new project going on back there. Um, so I, I guess I could inquire about that and see if they applied any form base code to that project.
Yeah, and I think that was kind of what I saw. If this is, if this is a route we choose to go down, it's very, it's a very intense process and, um, that would require a lot of, a lot of thought and deliberation.
And I think that was a lot of the concern that came up at the time.
Yeah, one of the unanswerable questions.
Yeah, you're on the recording too, sorry.
One of the unanswerable questions that was brought up many times with them during this whole discussion was the fact that they have multiple landowners and this thing requires something different than that, you know? Because you've got to have cooperation and some overarching control over what happens. And I don't think they ever even got remotely close to, and on the far west side, I didn't see it happening. And it doesn't sound like it happened in Pleasant View either. Form base requires some centralized plan and control. And if you've got independent landowners, each of which wants to do something on their own, that sort of flies in the face of, of a lot of this, I think.
And I know North Salt Lake is going through the same process with the development that they're putting in and going through the process of, of implementing form base code for this. I think it's like a shopping center, and so maybe they could be a resource to us.
So I think there's a lot of discussion here. Um, my recommendation or my motion to be is to table this. I don't think we need to take action on it now, but it's something that we keep on the table as we move forward, as we look at things.
My second.
Motion is second by, um, Josh and Boyd. Remember Boyd. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, one more somewhat uncomfortable. I threw all the fun ones on tonight, didn't I?
Just one more.
Just one more.
Hey, speeding. So I think we, we all get a lot of folks asking us, um, um, about speeding. What, what can we do about speeding? And I, I get a lot of, uh, recommendations, we need speed bumps, four-way stops, um, you know, more patrols. I know you guys are patrolling as much as you can, but we also know that they sometimes get away. And I, we see in your daily reports that, you know, there are plenty of them. So, um, I guess our discussion is, is there, what kind of actions do you, does anyone think we really can? we really can take? What can we do? I want this to be open and discussed.
I'd like to hear from the sheriff.
Just to make a few announcements, the sheriff's office is actually doing pretty well in manpower right now. With that being said, we have started a new traffic unit, which will start the 28th of this month, which includes five officers, including Sergeant Slater, who will be running it. These five officers will be dedicated for their whole patrol shift for traffic. They're focusing on three things, traffic enforcement, DUIs, and traffic accidents with injuries. So that's all they will be doing. Another thing that we've noticed that we've had recent success in with is with the flock cameras. Our officers are getting notifications on every shift on hits on these things, so that's helping with the traffic. Other things that we're looking at, we have the speed trailers. You guys have some in your cities. And we've had people come to us in the past and they'll say, they'll look at the data and they're like, oh, look at this, look at this guy. This guy was doing 58 miles an hour in a 40. Okay, but there was 3,000 cars that went through there in a week at the speed limit and you want us to go get that one? And we're trying our best, but to sit here and reduce, say you want to drop the speed limit from 25 to 20, you're trying to please the 1%. I mean, whatever you guys decide, we will support, no doubt. I think right now with this traffic unit started up, we're very excited about it. I think let's give it a shot and see what happens with it. But we're also signing up for other shifts. The state offers us money. Seatbelt shifts will be coming out. That's overtime for any deputy that wants to go out and they have to make two contacts an hour and write citations for seatbelts with zero tolerance. DUI shifts are coming out for the summer, same thing. These are overtime shifts where other deputies can sign up. And so with summertime being here in the hundred deadliest days, the sheriff's office is being very proactive with some of this stuff.
Can you give us a report back on those extra shifts, like the seatbelts? And let us know, like, how many takers you're getting on that and how much?
Yeah, we can do that.
How that's translating to officers on the street?
How many shifts did we get? 16? Six, 16 seatbelt shifts.
That's what I've seen with my work in infrastructure and people will go as fast as they feel safe. It doesn't matter if the speed limit's 50 or 20. That's been borne out in studies. If people feel safe going 70 or 80 on I-15, it doesn't matter what the speed limit is, they're going to go the speed, that speed.
The state recently changed that to 105 miles an hour is considered reckless. Me personally, I didn't agree with it because there was ways to do it before reckless driving, the definition before was three moving violations in a single episode or a wanton disregard for public safety. Me personally, I think if you're doing 80 in a 40, I can prove the disregard for public safety, but now they've attached a number to it, which I don't agree with.
Did they mean it to just be freeway and missed?
They were catering to the troopers on that.
Well, and additionally, you know, stop signs, it's it's been studied, stop signs and speed bumps don't reduce speeds. They speed up to get between and between the stop signs or they just slow down for the speed bump and then speed up between them.
Speed up to make it. My understanding, though, is by state law, we can't put in a stop sign to regulate speed, right?
Uh, no, and there's some other things you got to consider. One of the cities we dealt with a few years ago decided to lower their speed limit, I think by 10 miles an hour on some certain streets. And it raised some ruckus with the residents that all the city was trying to do is generate revenue. And so that's something to consider. We have some other things that the traffic units already talked about. Once a quarter, we may be putting a special task together, like go out and hit stop sign violations or go out and hit texting while driving or distracted driving. And so they have several goals that they want to do, perhaps even DUI checkpoints again.
I'd really like to see how this effort with the sheriffs plays out and to see what the numbers are after. I think that's a great, I I am completely supportive of that and I'm glad to see that there's people being brought on for that task specifically. And I think if they can see more, more coverage, more faces on the more cars, more sheriffs on the road, it'll make, it'll make a huge difference.
And this unit, they do want to focus on problem areas. So if complaints come in, it's stuff that they will address. I think Memorial Weekend, they're already planning something with bullet bikes on Trappers Loop, things like that.
And then if it continues to be a problem, maybe that's something we address with some of our road upgrade, upgrade projects in the future.
I know we talked about adding a few more sign, those Traffic Logic signs, are those, I mean, that could be one.
Relatively inexpensive. And I'm not bad mouthing anybody, but we generally find that when somebody complains that, oh, they're speeding in my neighborhood, the complainant is often speeding in somebody else's neighborhood later in the day. And so you you take it for what you get. But yeah, but we are excited about this new unit. We think it's going to have some great results for us.
Did you coordinate this?
We've had some discussions, but no, we didn't.
It's like the perfect timing.
It starts the 28th.
Okay.
Yeah.
And everybody's been selected for it and the interview process on it, we're way excited with who we picked.
Thank you.
He's excited because he gets to ride a motorcycle all summer, so.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Anything else?
Unless these guys have some more questions for you, I've got a couple of comments.
Like I said, whatever you guys pick, we will, we will support.
Okay.
My only comment, I mean, this has been brought up many times over the years. The hardest part to this is, you know, I've heard the speed bumps, which is really hard, especially in snowplow. I mean, it's just.
Snowplow, it also slows down fire trucks and ambulances.
Yeah. You know, I've read the studies, we've seen the reports, you know, stop signs just causes more congestion and it doesn't stop the speeding. It's just hard to regulate people who have a disregard for the law. I mean, that's the hard part is you're trying to take the people that the 1%, whatever, and force them to do something that they're not going to do. And how do you do that? And unfortunately, that's the truth and it's really hard to to come up to a solution for it.
And they ever just throw stuff at them. So I mean, that's, I mean, I guess that's one way.
So do we make it legal to throw stuff at speeders?
Throw citations at them.
Anyway, that's just my comments.
Okay, so the only, really, the only actions we could take is if we wanted to consider, everybody wants four-way stops, they think those work. Speed bumps, you know, I don't, I I I used to be a fan. I'm not a fan anymore. One, one question that I do get is when they say, well, why can't we have four-way stop? They have, I don't know how many they have in in your neighborhood through Mia. There's quite a few of those. Should we consider maybe removing some of those and allowing the actual traffic flow to go through so it's not, you know, we're being fair and not going, okay, they get all the four-way stops and nobody else gets any? Do we, would we want to consider doing anything like that?
Well, I think like on 2575 and some other locations, we do need to probably, as we've got more and more development, look at the fact that we need to add some stop signs. But I, I mean, like I say, my understanding is it should be to control the right-of-way, not to control speeding. And so it needs to be looked at from that point of view.
And it would, I think necessitate like a traffic study and some evaluation against, you know.
You know, if we're going to spend money on that, I think we have to have a good enough reason to spend the money to do that. And like I say, 2575 may be one of those areas because it's a newer.
It's a new.
But part of me wants to wait a little bit, too, and get some of that development, you know, built out before we just do a traffic study and it's half there.
Right. You don't know how about the traffic there yet. Maybe the right-of-ways will.
But you know, I mean, I drive through Mia Meadows every day and if you know the route to go, you can miss most of the four-way stops. So. But I mean, it's, but like you say, is it's just, you've got that percentage in there that, how do you regulate people who don't care?
And I've been, I've been one of those who's like, okay, we're going to have a four-way stop. I've got a corner just down from me that should be the first one, but it probably does warrant something because it's 2575 and 3300, it's pretty major. It's not, you know, but there's also a weird curve in there.
And as soon as you do that, though, you, I mean, the classic example is the four-way stop just west of Walquist. Now you get four or five cars that are backing up instead of traffic flowing. Now you get a lot of congestion, a lot more noise, a lot more other stuff. So it's, and more people frustrated trying to speed. They don't stop at the stop sign, they're trying to hurry through. So I don't, you just cause more different problems is all you're causing.
Yeah, I don't want to throw a stop sign up just because, you know, we think it's going to make the problem better. There has to be some logic and some numbers and sense behind it.
So should we seriously could, so personally, I like those feedback signs because I know it works on me. When I'm driving along and I I look at it, it's like, oh, I'm doing 40, I should be doing 30, you know? It slows me down, it might work on somebody else.
Well, the nice thing, too, is when people do call in to complain, you can use the back of the data to explain, hey, we have data. They aren't just telling you your speed. This is the data and we're getting.
We show them the charts.
The charts and other stuff, which is helpful to have that conversation.
And I think it was pretty unanimous, our support when we talked with Dave about purchasing additional ones of those. But I don't think I saw them in the budget.
Budget. I was going to bring that up.
They're, they're hidden somewhere down in streets.
In streets. Can you write tickets on personal confessions in a public meeting?
Oh, this is about to get good.
What did I confess to? 40 to 30. Does anyone else have? But make your comment, sir. Identify yourself. I already know your address.
Number one moron on 126. My name's Mike Beal. I live at 1407 North 2000 West in Far West. Bonnie and I met with the previous mayor and the UDOT guy discussing speed limit on 2000. Well, he says, whatever the street will take, if people are going 60 miles an hour, that's what it will take. We had to beg Mr. Lee to get the speed limit dropped. The UDOT guy said, two years prior, there was a test, whatever you want to call it, on that street. And we could have went down to that speed limit of 50 then. Why didn't we? We had to come in and bang our heads against the door to get it. As we walked out, Mayor Lee says, what do you think, Bonnie? Should we do this? Bonnie says, that's why we're here, to get the speed limit lowered.
Thanks, Mike. So the a difference between that and what most of what we're discussing is that's UDOT? We can decide what we do on our residential streets.
In your residential streets. I, I, I want to make a comment. Every, gas prices are going up. You want four-way stops? How many cars is going to back up that four-way stop? Just like Josh was saying, pretty soon you get backed up. Now we're sitting there idling. Are we doing any good for the?
Thank you for your comment. Appreciate you.
I'm still number one moron.
Okay. One more public. You're number two. Okay. Identify yourself. I don't care about your address.
Robert Alexander. Maybe if when you're talking about the 1% that won't do, behave themselves, how come you don't look at a surgical way of doing it and using, renting those AI cameras that catch the license plate and the data is fed? And then it happens at certain times, you can have your police officers at those points when you know they're coming through and you're going after that 1%. It doesn't waste the sheriff's time, doesn't waste somebody just waiting there all the time for the, for the people to come through because there is that technology now.
I think that's what he mentioned, is they get those notifications and then you'll get them, right? And he brought that up when he was talking.
With the flock cameras.
With the flock cameras.
We don't, a while back, we had.
Four speeding, but they can get license numbers.
Yeah, there was a discussion about it earlier, but we weren't, as a city, interested in all the other cities around us are putting them in. And that might be a possibility because if you're only after a certain amount of people, that's the best allocation of resources. Because obviously the police have a lot better things to do than to babysit speeders. Just my two cents.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Okay, any more discussion on, do we want to take any action on speeding at this time?
I'd like to really, I I agree with Katie. I think, let's see, let's see how this works.
Those will be reflected in those stops and will be reflected in those reports we get, right? Okay.
I'd say we would, I'd make a motion that we table this for now. We want to, you know, keep up with it, but let's find out how this this works.
I'll second.
Okay, Boyd and Josh did motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimous, it passes. Thank you for the discussion. I appreciate all these discussions. I think it's good to have them. So moving on to consent items. Proof of minutes dated May 5th, 2022.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of May 5th, 2022.
I'll second.
Okay, we have Dave and Katie on the motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Most, approval of the bills dated May 11th, 2022.
I'm making, oh, go ahead. I'll just second.
I'll make a motion, we approve the bills dated May 11th, 2022.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have Katie and Janelle on the motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, set a budget work session for 6:00 PM on Thursday, June 2nd. Lindsay, will you remind me why we're, is this for our final or is this for the morning?
We didn't have, this is a very lengthy discussion on property tax at your last time.
Okay.
There was a discussion of that one, to have another one.
Okay. Okay, so this will be another uncomfortable discussion about property taxes and our tax rate discussion. So I'll.
I would make a motion that we set a budget work session for 6:00 PM on Thursday, June 2nd.
Okay, we have Boyd and David on the motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have an interlocal agreement with Weber County for use of security cameras. So a little bit of background on this, we were contacted. Lindsay, back me up or correct me if I get it wrong, but they asked if we had a camera on our ballot box.
Yeah, there's a change in legislation that says that they have to be under surveillance. So they sent out just a questionnaire. We did have a camera. So then they then made funds available to everyone who did not. So then they, we kind of said, that's not fair. And so then they changed it to anyone can get the reimbursement. So we are going to put one, just give us an additional one. So this is allowing us to submit a reimbursement. And also that, yeah, that they can, that we maintain our records, but that they can use them if they need to. I think, right?
Yeah, or Ryan helped catch that on the agreement that was like, wait a minute, how come, because we're proactive, we're being punished? Any questions for any of these folks on this?
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, so we already have a camera there.
Yes.
And it's installed. So where, so are we using these funds to get an additional camera and? Okay.
Talked about whether or not we needed to move the existing one to put it there and they said no.
Okay.
They changed the language in the agreement. Says that it specifically allows for additional cameras.
Yeah, the, the original agreement said, yeah, for instance, you've got a camera that's watching the ballot box. You know, by the way, you want to get money here, you don't have a camera if you need a new one. Then this mayor said, yeah, that didn't seem fair in those cities that had that. So we just essentially changed the the language in the document, the agreement. It takes out that we have a camera that's that's looking at that. It's just that we have a, we have a camera system. It's not just one camera, we have a camera system. In any change or addition you make to that camera system, if we qualify, we can, we can submit the application to the county that we qualify, they'll reimburse us. We won't, but.
And it says that this is for this, so we'll be responsible for the storage of those, those records. this is for this, so we'll be responsible for the storage of those those recordings. And I know, um, those can take quite a bit of space and I mean, what's the cost that's associated with the extra storage space?
The storage space is just kind of on activity levels.
Okay.
I mean, we went back. We were looking to see if someone actually said was here that said they were here and we went back like.
For a year.
We went, so they said thirty days is on average, but we went back further than that.
Okay, and that's.
That's specific.
And that's in line with the, um, the state law.
They don't have, I don't think there's any consensus. She says it's like one very nonspecific line in the legislature that just says they have to be.
There is a line in here that says that it has to be, they has to be retained under applicable state law and the city zone. And so I was wondering, what is that law? How, what's that timeframe? And then is that timeframe putting an undue burden on us to pay for extra storage space for those? Okay.
They asked how long, and I told them, and then at the end of our conversation, she said, it's pretty nonspecific what they're trying to.
Okay.
Yeah, we're we're so proactive on this that we more than exceed any of their expectations.
Well, then, good work.
And you're good to, uh, get the reimbursement by June first or the request for?
I've already got an invoice, so yes.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
And we'll have a camera on the front door, which we don't have.
Well, thank you for your diligence in that and and getting, you know, moving on on that benefit.
Okay, I'll entertain the motion.
I will make that motion to approve the interlocal agreement for Weber County for the use of a security.
I'll second.
Okay, Boyd and Katie, we heard the motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Okay. Um, the next one is review administratively approved business licenses. Are there any questions on that? There's really no action.
I didn't see any concerns with the ones that were submitted.
I had one concern with the woodworking license. Um, I just know we've had some issues in the past with like dust and other things going into neighbors' yards and and shavings. And I just wanted to know if that one was, if they have like a shed or it's in their basement or, you know, and then what they're doing with that leftover material, that was the only one that caused me a little bit of hesitation, especially since it's a residential business license. But I don't know.
Well, we do have a nuisance ordinance, so if they violate that, we can go again.
It didn't really say where they were conducting business.
Yeah, did they allude to that at all on that, Lindsay?
I don't have that. But I can for sure ask.
Bench tables, chair of storage.
Probably Robert Alexander, because he likes to make a lot of dust and noise.
I guess, though, the the application says the business will not produce noise, dust, obnoxious fumes or other safety hazards.
So it says it's not conducted within the residence, so I, from that, I would maybe think it's a.
Shed?
Shed, recess room.
But they did check the boxes that say they agreed to all of the terms.
So I guess that if it does become a nuisance, gives us a some, okay, then that.
Said they would apply and comply.
That eases my concern.
Um, we don't need to take any action on this. Um, so moving on to Mayor Council follow-up report on assignments. I'm gonna start with Dave because he likes starting.
Okay, um, we had a mosquito abatement meeting, um, last Monday or week ago Monday. And, uh, really no new news came out of that, just that the things are progressing well, that they're on target on budget. And, uh, just having what seems to be a normal, uh, season so far. And then, uh, Mayor, I'll let you take the meeting that we had today. You can give the update on that. That's it.
You don't want to?
No, you got it.
You gave me one more thing.
Well, just in case you want to have further discussion on it. I'm leaving it up to you.
Josh?
Um, so we had our sewer board meeting Monday night. Um, things are progressing pretty well over there. The only thing that I thought would be interesting to bring up here is one of the discussions I've had on the sewer board for quite some time is, you know, they talk about infiltration. I know years past, they talked a lot about how do you monitor if people are doing their sump pumps into it or water's getting in and and the way that they do their billing billing right now and distribution throughout all the the different cities and stuff, it's kind of, they don't have a way to monitor that. And so some of the cities were coming back because they're relining some of their own pipes and their own things, but they talked about, well, what's the incentive for cities to do that kind of work? Um, one thing that they are talking about, and it's early discussions, is maybe creating, um, monitoring locations so that they can actually do flow rates and all this other stuff. One, so that they could actually see what cities are contributing and maybe do different on the billing. But two is it would give cities an incentive to go through and maybe reline their pipes and do other things to bring their rates down. Um, so that's just something, you know, they they're gonna look at over the next year, so I don't know how long that's gonna take, but I think it'd be a benefit for us because it'd be nice for us to kind of know too where that's at, but um, I just know we've had that discussions internally as well, you know, do we have issues with our own lines, so. Freedom Festival is moving along, getting closer. I think we're sending out the flyer next week in the bill, in the billing.
And did you get mine?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have edits?
Just the one. I can't remember what it was now.
Just the wording of.
The softball tournament.
Yeah.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah.
Yep, I can do that real fast.
And then, um, the plans for the Public Works facility is in the works, it's in the preliminary plans. They're getting those engineered right now so that they can get out and get budgeting and bids put together for that, so it's coming along. That's all I've got.
Okay. Boyd?
Uh, we had our fire district board meeting. Uh, we held it in Marriott Slaterville's, uh, building because of the renovations that are going on. And it will be there for the next few months if anybody's interested in attending. Uh, probably until November at least. Um, everything's going well with the district. We're doing budget things just like we are in the city. Um, getting ready for the for the next year, making sure we have enough fire trucks and firemen. So, um, other than that, just a few little meetings as requested by citizens, so I think you know most of those.
Might know a couple of them.
Yeah, okay.
Is that everything? Okay, Katie?
Um, a few exciting things with communities that care. Um, they are, want to do a recognition of, um, there, they did an audit. The last fall, the health department did some tobacco compliance checks. And, um, there were three of our of our businesses in Far West that, um, four businesses in Far West that were, um, found in compliance. And, um, I'd love to be able to recognize those four businesses during, they have like a a presentation and they'll bring like a a framed, um, flyer and have the mayor hand those to those businesses. Um, I'd love to do that, recognize those during a city council meeting. So if we could get those, if we could get that on the agenda, I don't know if what our next meeting looks like, but that would give us a couple of weeks to send out an invite and make contact with them. So, sound amenable to everyone?
I'm gonna guess the four.
You want to go? Okay.
Just off the top of my head.
Okay.
Hogies, Seven Eleven, Maverick and, uh, it's usually a sixty-six, but I think it's now an Exxon.
Millers. Millers.
Miller.
Petromart, is that the one at the corner I think it is?
That's Hogies.
Yeah, so you're right.
Well, it's the gas station, the only one that sells cigarettes, so it's pretty easy.
Yep, sell those.
I don't buy cigarettes, I just know they have them.
Um, so, okay, we'll plan on that tentatively, or we'll plan on that for next city council meeting if we can get that on the agenda. Um, Know Your Script, this is an outreach campaign that, um, advocates other options than opioid use for pain management or, you know, just trying to, an anti-opioid, uh, campaign. They will be installing five, um, five kind of pieces in our Smith Family Park. Um, and they're, um, all different dysfunctional pieces of kind of, uh, there's a picnic table that has a crooked top and there's a a porta potty that doesn't open. Um, they're installing those pieces, um, Saturday in Smith Family Park. And then they'll be having a, um, launch at Smith Family Park on June the sixteenth.
That was the sixth, but maybe it's the sixteenth.
I think it's the sixteenth, it was a Thursday. TBD, I'll get back to you on that, but they'll be doing kind of like a press event and a open house to kind of launch this campaign. Um, they'll have these installments at, uh, West Haven Park and Hooper Park as well. Um, so excited to have that as in in our parks. Um, and then they have, the coalition has, um, provided each one of the partnering cities with a thousand dollar sponsorship for, um, any activity that, um, has a prevention um, tie to it, so it could be a family dinner night or a sponsorship for our Freedom Festival or guest speaker or, um, so um, I'm open to how any of your suggestions and how you'd like to, how I'd like to use that thousand dollars, whether it's, you know, um, something for Freedom Festival or something. I really like the family dinner night. They said one of the cities did that and they bought, used the thousand dollars to buy box lunch, box, box meals and then kind of did like a drive-through at the city and, um, so come and get your your meal and go home and have dinner together. So I liked that idea, but, um, would love to hear kind of your guys' suggestions of how I'd like to spend that that money and where we'd like it to go. And then hopefully we'll probably have to make a have a, that as a consent item, right?
At least.
So, yeah, if you have any specific ideas or any thoughts, please let me know.
Okay.
And that's.
Anything else?
That goes along with the Know Your Script campaign?
Yes.
That thousand dollars?
Yes, or no, 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 separate thing. They had some urine money that they had to spend.
Okay, so that can be anything that goes toward.
Anything prevention or, you know, so it could kind of be whatever we want it.
Do we have to use their suggestions or can we make one up?
We can make our own. So just it just has to have some sort of.
So like the family dinner would be like spend time with your family around the dinner table as a prevention.
Mm-hmm, yep. So. Um, I think that's it.
Janelle, you're up.
Uh, the only thing I really had to report on, um, is the park adoption and I owe Ryan, uh, an application to just look over and then that should be ready to start advertising. So I'll do that. Well, we switched our schedule now for park meeting, right?
I got that jumpstart.
That's okay. I'll get it done like Monday, Tuesday and have it to you so that it's ready for the next meeting, but. Um, and that's all other than getting those trainings watched from Utah league cities and towns.
Have you made it yet?
Not all of them, but I've gotten the water and the housing and the, I think I've only got a couple more. Half an hour at a time. I get them.
So you're almost ready for the hat and the tassel?
Yeah, well, I'm ready for that anytime. I'll take it. And a sash, maybe? Just kidding.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so I I don't have a whole lot. I don't even have a lot of one more. I know you like, guys like to give me grief. I I do have, um, uh, somewhat of, it's a sad announcement. I'll just go ahead and get that out of the way. Yesterday I was here a little bit late and, um, our dear Chris Midget walked in with an envelope. And I go, that's a letter of resignation, you know, and she's like, yes, it is. So Chris Midget is resigning as our senior center director. She's doing it for personal reasons. She says, I'm retired and I don't feel retired. I want to be retired. So, because she's tired. And she does plan on, uh, going through till, um, June thirtieth. I don't, she was gonna go a little bit longer. She does intend, if we can find someone, she wants to orient them and get turnover and show them how to do the reports and all that kind of stuff, so. And she also wants to get through the the dinner and all that other kind of stuff. So that was something that kind of hit us yesterday, so I told her I was gonna sit in the office and cry for a while and I did for a little bit. Um, yeah, so that's sad, so we'll have to do something about that, find someone else hopefully as good. Uh, let's see, something else, so the meeting that we had today, expand on it a little bit without going into too much detail. We, um, there is some interest in, um, land north of Amazon. Um, probably for not what we have in our general plan. I think we can all realize that, uh, it's probably not going to be what we have in our current general plan as far as for mixed use. Because, um, when we did that, it was, um, we didn't know Amazon was going to be there. So Amazon has really changed everything. Quite frankly, the only access we have is not really access, it's Cottonwood Drive, it's not our road. We don't own it. So we have a choice of, um, something for us to seriously consider. If we want to, um, keep that property and, uh, allow it to grow into what it's going to grow into or whether we uh, the alternative is Marriott Slaterville may want to do a boundary adjustment for that piece of property. So that's something for us to consider. Uh, we can't make any action on that because we just talked about it now, but something for us to chew on and consider in our general plan, so. Going forward on that. Um, but it, for what it's worth, uh, the Stephanie that we're working with with economic development and getting those properties out there and advertised and whatever you want to call it, seems to be getting some, like, you know, there's some bait on the hook in many ways, so do you want to expand on that at all, Dave?
Maybe just add that, yes, there, you know, there's an interest coming in and, um, I think at this point, the smart thing to do is we just start talking to Marriott Slaterville about our options because really our options are limited is the way I see it, just because of our access or or lack of it. Um, there's a canal that goes to the east, interstate to the west, Marriott Slaterville to the south, so there's really only that one exit point, but it's Cottonwood Drive and it just, there's in, you know, if you look and envision in that, there's no way that really trucks, trailers can roll in and out of that successfully in any sizable amount of quantity, so. Um, I I. Or even homes, yeah, residential would even just get even worse, I think. So, um, working, I put kind of a bullet list together today to start some questions, uh, start asking some questions of Marriott Slaterville and see what's just what their interest is. But we need to have the bigger discussion on our end as far as are we prepared to uh, change what we thought we'd, it would be, get used for in our general plan.
Yeah, one idea that kind of popped up was they did, uh, they used the word form-based code on that. When if you come up with a good form-based code and they're actually willing to help us with that, we could actually ensure that we have a buffer of possibly some green space or something like that. In between that and it would be Heritage Ranch. And, um, I actually talked to Boyd about this, it was like kind of a brain fart as I drove by and I looked over and I saw horses out in the field, I'm like, what about an equestrian friendly area that's kind of green that happens to kind of go with that? Just a thought. Anyway, that that was, uh, that, there's no Wakehog uh, yet and Bonavista is next week, so I do not have anything else to re, oh, one more, I gotta remember. I do have one more. This, but this is, this is important and I I brought it up just to make sure that it, it, so this is, um, National Public Works Week. Um, I've been posting some things to help, you know, thank those guys and I took them to lunch yesterday at Maddox. I think they enjoyed it and it was just a great big thank you to them because they they do so much and they've been giving me pictures of, they're down in the holes with stuff that none of us ever want to get in on, um.
That was like a giant hair clog. I was like,
Yeah.
I mean, I know it's not hair, but.
Yeah, that was just roots in a pipe they pull out and, you know, so that they do a lot of things. They got all the Christmas lights out of the trees finally, um, you know, so anything from that to trimming things to pulling things out of the ground to pushing snow and, um, if you include Mick, which I mean, he's kind of a public works guy, you know, but definitely part of parks. Um, we only have six and we have. And we have this kind of a city. And they, one of the retro pictures I was sent was actually of, uh, 10 years ago. And I, I plan on posting it. It was a picture of basically the staff at that time. So, Andrea, Lindsay, Robbie, Dave, and, um, our friend that left. The, our, before Nate.
Oh, Sean.
Sean. So, I have that picture. And that's all we had. And actually, we only have, um, two more public works than we did then. And so, we haven't really grown that much. And they said, actually, we only have one more, because they actually have two more people because they have Josh and, um, Bubba. But they're like, no, because they counted Jimmy as one of them. Because he was just as much public works as they were, you know, which I think we all know he definitely was. I, I don't know if they were trying to give me a hint or, yeah. Not only do you guys give me grief, but they were also giving me grief because I also have got, oh, uh, a little bit of grief about my hot dog cooking ability at Fishing Club. You know, they were wondering how well I did there, but I think Lou will back me up. I did okay cooking hot dogs. And we did, uh, the kids, it was our very last day. Lyle probably would love to be talking about this, but he had to go early. But we actually had some, catch some pretty big fish. I mean, not even with my camera tricks, where they, you know, they were, they were that big. They were actually that big. It was, it was good. Do you want to expand on any of that, Lou, at all?
Oh, they, there were some, two or four pounds. So, respectful fish.
So, that, that's all I have to report this time. And I'm out of one more things, except we need to do one more thing.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ever? We're adjourned. Thank you. Yeah. These guys couldn't pick, so we just kind of, yeah, yours, yours was unique. They picked-